Aloha and welcome everyone to-
She said she sent in.
Hello, oh hi, sorry, thank you for your patience, we had a little bit of technical difficulties getting on. So, welcome to the Hawaii State Senate Health Committee. I'm Jared Kilho Kalole, Chair of the Committee. I'm joined by my fellow members of the Health Committee, Senator Vice Chair, Senator Ross Baker, Senator Joyce Sanbuenaventura, Senator Sharon Moriwaki, and sure to join us on video shortly, Senator Kurt Favela. As you know, this meeting is being livestreamed on YouTube. In the unlikely event that we have to abruptly end this hearing due to technical difficulties, the Committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business on Wednesday, February 9th at 1:40 PM. And a public notice will be posted on the Legislature's website. We have a big agenda today, a lot of testifiers. The Senate Health Committee ruled this two minutes of live remote testimony per person. We've received your written testimony and I've reviewed all of it. So I'd encourage you to stand on your testimony in the interest of time. We have a 90-minute block here in the Health Committee and I'd like to vote on all the measures at the end of our agenda, instead of having to defer decision-making to another date. But if you do have any particular points that you believe deserve special attention, or if you'd like to add anything new to your testimony, I'd encourage you to use your two minutes accordingly. I'll be reading from a list of individuals who submitted testimony. Again, we apologize if the closed captioning doesn't accurately transcribe your name. And I think on that note, we can proceed. First measure is SB 2034 relating to health. This requires assessment of patients who are subject to emergency hospitalization, diagnosed with a mental illness or severe substance use disorder, and found to be lacking decisional capacity to determine if a surrogate or guardian needs to be appointed to make appropriate healthcare decisions for the patient. First, we have the Department of Health in support. Okay?
Oh, I believe Michael Champion was mentioning, was going to report for us, but he is, we are gonna stand on our testimony. Thank you.
Okay, great. Uh, let me see here, Hawaii Pacific Health offering comments. Go ahead, Mike.
Hi Chair, um, I believe he has technical difficulties.
Mike, we can, we can see you, but, okay, so, um, we will try and get back to Hawaii Pacific Health, Institute for Human Services in support.
I think we're, hello?
Yes, we can hear you, please, please.
Thank you, um, you know, I, I would stand on my testimony, but I also, in my testimony, had mentioned that I had some recommendations for expansion of, you know, the bill to include or to provide access to people who are lacking decisional authority. I think the bill as it stands, you know, will give us an opportunity to determine whether the person lacks capacity, but it doesn't actually help further that very quickly, the treatment. So we'd like to have you consider these recommendations even, really included in my testimony around the MH dula or expartee. At that time, being able to perhaps allow the judge to say whether they, you know, would be willing to have the psychiatrist treat the person they found to be lacking capacity and be diagnosed with that mental illness. And then to be able to treat for 30 days. This was something that was inserted in the last version in last year, but it kind of fell out. I don't know, I hadn't heard why it was left out, but just wanted to say that those two things are things that I would like for you guys to consider.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, with the Queens Health Systems offering comments.
Hello, I'm Chair Vice Chair Members of the Committee. My name is John Garvoldy with the Queens Health System. We're gonna stand on our written testimony, providing comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Louis Erstichk offering-
Good afternoon, Chair, I'm testifying on behalf of Hawaii Disability Rights Center. And briefly, as I indicated in the testimony, we're not necessarily against this, but I do want to note a few concerns. This proposal surfaced last year when House Call 310 was being considered and, and had much stronger provisions that most lawyers agreed were probably unconstitutional. The Attorney General floated this idea as a potential compromise that we would assess these people to see if they needed a surrogate or a guardian. It's not necessarily a bad idea, but it raises a lot of unanswered questions. It's a, I don't think that area of law has been really used in the context of mental health decision-making. It's usually been used for like, you know, end-of-life care and things like that. So how, how would that work? You can't hold the person in the hospital while you're, while you're having a guardianship proceeding. So the language by itself is not a bad idea, but I think obviously it's gonna require a lot more discussion to kind of add some details and figure out how this is gonna work. But we're happy to be a part of the conversation certainly, and we hope to be a constructive participant. So thank you.
Thank you very much. But let's see if we can go back to Hawaii Pacific Health. Mike, can you hear us?
I, I can hear you, sorry about that. Yeah, Mike Robinson, Hawaii Pacific Health, we provided comments. Couple that are grounded really in the experience that we have in the acute care setting and the emergency room. I, I think there's a few unanswered questions regarding how long we would need to basically hold a patient in, in the process of trying to keep guardianship. There's, there's a list of questions that are, that want a little more clarity in the statute. But I think more importantly, for this to work, we wanted to make sure that the, that the, because this is an emergency department intervention, we wanted to make sure that the statute was aligned with what emergency departments typically have at their disposal in terms of staffing. And both the emergency room physician and psychologists, we wanted to explicitly put into this bill as a request, just that the requirements of the bill match what staffing actually exists in acute care settings. And, but we do appreciate the attempts to address this issue. It's a very serious issue for all of us. And we would appreciate the opportunity to talk a little bit further about this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's all the testimony for individuals who registered to testify in person. Is there anyone on the call that I missed or who would like to testify? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to Senator Sanbuenaventura for the first question.
Yes, thank you, for Michael Robinson. Your concern is how long the patient needed to be in the ER. My question to you is, right now, my understanding is that the hospitals hold an individual, not necessarily in the ER, but probably in the acute facility, while the court determines whether or not that person is in imminent danger to himself or others anyway. So this, my understanding of this bill, this expedites the process. So why, I mean, how long are you folks holding them anyway, right now?
Well, it depends, right? Because if they come in on a Friday and we try to attempt that process, that would get, almost guarantee that process to extend over the weekend, if I'm not correct, right? So that would be an additional step that could extend the process if we had to go through the steps of, of seeking guardianship on, say, an off-hour weekend or, or late evening event. Right now, we don't have that requirement. I, I think the other, other issue too is the, we've had patients that have come in and they do, they, that status, whether they qualify for decision-making situation. They can come in and they might have that appearance of requiring that. An hour later, they may not require that, and then they're back again, maybe requiring it. So I guess we could do this process, but it's still no guarantee because it really will be dependent upon the time that that evaluation is administered when that condition is a very fluid condition as the patient is in our hold.
Okay, thank you.
Members, any other questions? Okay, we'll move to the next measure. SB 2467 relating to mental health screenings. This requires that one annual mental health screening be included in health insurance coverage for diagnosis and treatment of mental disorders. First up, we have the Insurance Commissioner offering comments.
Good afternoon, Chair Keo Kalole and Vice Chair Baker, members of the Committee. My name is Colin Hayashida. I am the Insurance Commissioner for the Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs. The Department stands on its written testimony, offering comments. We thank the Committee for the opportunity and I will be available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have the Testifying for the Stonewall Caucus of the Democratic Party of Hawaii, Michael Goliyu in support.
Not present, Chair.
Okay, are there any other members of the public on the call who would like to testify on this measure? Okay, members, any questions for Mr. Hayashida? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next measure on the agenda. SB 2680 relating to health. This authorizes advanced practice-registered nurses, in addition to physicians, to practice medical aid in dying in accordance with their scope of practice and prescribing authority. It also authorizes psychiatric mental health nurse practitioners and clinical nurse specialists, in addition to psychiatrists, psychologists, and clinical social workers, to provide counseling to a qualified patient. It reduces the mandatory waiting period between oral requests from 20 days to 15 days and waives the mandatory waiting period for those terminally ill individuals not expected to survive the mandatory waiting period. First up, we have the Department of Health offering comments.
Not present, Chair.
Okay, aloha, Chair, in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Peggy as well, with aloha, Chair. We'll stand on our written testimony in support of this measure and just thank the Committee for hearing it and allowing APRNs to practice full scope of their license. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have the Board of Nursing, Mr. Shima.
Thank you, Chair. We'll stand on our written comments. We'll be here to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Compassion and Choices in support.
We stand on our written testimony, thank you.
Thank you very much. Hawaii State Center for Nursing offering comments.
Not present, Chair.
Okay, thank you, uh, let me see here. Oh, I don't have the notes on the acronym. Dr. Souza, please go ahead.
Aloha, Chair Keo Kalole, excuse me, Keo Kalole and Vice Chair Baker and Committee Members. The Hawaiian Islands Association for Marriage and Family Therapy strongly supports SB 2680, which would give advanced-practice nurse, registered nurses and psychiatric mental health nurse practitioners the authority to gauge and certain mental, medical aid and dying counseling services. These services have been previously limited to physicians, psychiatrists, psychologists, and social workers. And we believe this bill can be strengthened to further achieve its, its goals by adding marriage and family therapists to the core of healthcare professionals allowed to provide those counseling services. Along with psychiatrists, social workers, and advanced-practice psychiatric nurses, MFTs are one of the five core mental health professions identified by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services. And perhaps most remain to this measure, the MFTs are specifically trained to help primary relationship networks that may become resources for well-being. With a relational and systemic focus, MFTs use a perspective that considers the full context of a patient's situation. And this perspective is particularly important when working with critically serious issues like the intentional ending of one's life. So that's all I have to offer. Mahalo for listening to my testimony and I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you very much. Aubrey Hawk in support.
Good afternoon, everyone, thank you so much. I'm Aubrey Hawk, I live on the rural Puna District of Big Island of Hawaii. And I have a volunteer role that I perform that I've been doing in one way or another since this, this Our Care a Choice Act became law. I am acting as a patient coordinator. A lot of patients find their way to me because they're having trouble accessing the very law that is their right. They qualify in every way, they're terminally ill, they have a terminal prognosis, up sound line, residents of Hawaii. These people, without exception, have thought long and hard about this process. They're well-informed, they do not need this unnecessarily long, almost three-week waiting period, the longest in the nation. They know what they're doing. And I would like to add further that if, if they've made it to dealing with our long waiting period, they're already the lucky ones. Too many people can't even find a provider, especially in an area like where I live. APRNs already are willing to serve and are in fact serving as primary care providers. And they have all of the authorization to act under this law. They're just denied it the way the law is currently written. So I support this bill and thank you.
Thank you very much. That's all the registered testimony we have for this bill. Did I miss anyone? Okay, members, questions? Okay, I, I'd like to note for the record that there were 20 individuals or organizations who testified in support of this measure, five in opposition and four with comments. And if there are no questions, then we'll move to the next measure, which is SB 2718 relating to medical cannabis. This exempts any person who has reached the age of 65 from the requirement of having a debilitating medical condition to be eligible for the use of medical cannabis. First up, we have the Attorney General's Office offering comments.
Good afternoon, Chair, Andrew Goff, on behalf of the Attorney General. So as you noted, the bill essentially seeks to exempt anyone that's 65 or older from the restrictions on medical cannabis. The mechanism that is used here is to exempt them from chapter, section 329, 122A. The issue with that is 122A actually is what authorizes anyone to use medical cannabis. The first sentence of 122A is, notwithstanding any law in the contrary, the medical use of cannabis by a qualifying patient shall be permitted. And then it lists several qualifying sections. So that shall be permitted is really what you would need to allow somebody to use medical cannabis at all. And if you exempt somebody from 60, 65 or older from that provision, it essentially prohibits them from using medical cannabis. And then one of the qualifiers within 122A is that a patient only uses an adequate supply, basically a medically necessary amount of medical cannabis. And if you remove that, it has the effect of looking like you're making an age-restricted recreational program for senior citizens. And, you know, really, our solution is if you're looking to expand the medical cannabis program for senior citizens, you would keep them in 122A, but add more debilitating conditions that would qualify senior citizens for medical cannabis and then include a rationale for age restriction.
Thank you very much. Next, we have the Department of Health in opposition.
Good afternoon, Chair Kilho Kalole, Vice Chair Baker, and Members of the Health Committee. My name is Tammy Whitney, I'm from the Department of Health Office of Medical Cannabis Control and Regulation, representing the Director of Health. And the Department stands on its written testimony in opposition to this measure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's all the registered testimony we have for this bill. Is there anyone else on the call who would like to testify? Okay, I'd like to note the supportive testimony from Randy Gons. And members, are there any questions? Senator Baker.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to ask the Department of Health, since many of us may not have their testimony in front of us, what their opposition is.
Thank you. We just feel that registering, sorry, removing the provider's role to examine and monitor their patients could possibly jeopardize patient health and safety. Patients who are 65 and older may have other conditions and other medications that could result in unfavorable drug interactions. And then we also feel that exempting senior citizens from any limit of on-the-permissible supply of cannabis would appear, there would be no clear medical justification for applying limits to patients with conditions and not to senior citizens.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, members, any other questions? All right, seeing none, let's move to the next measure. This is SB 2735 relating to behavioral health crisis stabilization beds. This appropriates funds to the Adult Mental Health Division of the Department of Health to support increased behavioral health crisis stabilization beds. Department of Health in support.
Good afternoon, Chair Keo Ho Kalole, Vice Chair Baker, and Members of the Committee. Thank you for allowing us to, to stand on our written testimony in support of this measure. This would help us to expand our crisis stabilization beds across the state, which could help at this time in need of our mental health system and helping those in crisis. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have, oh, that's all the registered testimony we have for this bill. Is there anyone who'd like to testify that's on the call? Okay, so I'd like to note the offered comments of the Department of Budget and Finance, the judiciary in support. The rest of the, the remaining testifiers submitted written testimony in support, the Hawaii Disability Rights Center, Hawaii Health and Harm Reduction Center, Hawaii Primary Care Association, Hawaii Psychological Association, Hawaii Substance Abuse Coalition, Partners in Care, Darah Carlin, and late testimony from Alamon Sears, Prevent Suicide Hawaii Task Force, and Kathleen Marion. Members, any questions? Senator Moriwaki.
Hi, thank you, thank you, Chair. For Amy Curtis, Dr. Curtis, hi. I, I really think we need all of these stabilization beds, but I still want to go back to the question I think we asked in Ways and Means Committee is what is the status and how soon can we get the stabilization beds at the Hawaii State Hospital? And there were problems in, in that. And is this money going to that? Or what is, what is the timeline for adding more beds that we currently have funds for?
Um, there currently, there are stabilization beds named Ekolu at the state hospital. Part of the funds would be to expand the number of beds. But also, what we're trying to do is add additional beds in other locations. We also have eight beds on Kona. We're looking to expand beds on both sides of the Big Island. We also currently have procurement out right now to look at beds across the state, including Maui and Kauai as well, and additional sites on Oahu. We also have a short-term contract at Waikiki Beachside that we're working with in collaboration with the city and county.
So the Ekolu beds, you currently have how many?
There's 11 there, and we would like to get that up to as high as 24. And part of that is additional, I think we mentioned, additional work that needs to be done from an electrical perspective and other work that we need done on the facilities to allow that expansion.
The timing-wise, it can be done sooner than later?
Oh yes, very soon, yes.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we'll move on to the next measure, SB 2736 relating to crisis outreach programs. This appropriates funds to the Department of Health for a statewide crisis outreach program. Department of Health in support.
Good afternoon, Amy Curtis here again. We stand on our testimony in support of this measure. This would allow us to expand our crisis mobile outreach teams, to at least some of them have a nurse, paramedic, or EMT that could help with low-level medical first aid or other issues that may come up as they're going out and, and handling those cases for behavioral health crisis, mobile outreach crisis care.
Thank you very much. Hawaii Substance Abuse Coalition in support.
Not present, Chair.
Okay, that's all the registered live testimony we have. Is there anyone I missed? Okay, I'd also like to note the written comments of the Department of Budget and Finance and the supportive testimony from the Hawaii Disability Rights Center, Hawaii Health and Harm Reduction Center, Darah Carlin, Alamon Sears, Prevent Suicide in Hawaii Task Force, and Kathleen Marion. Members, questions for the Department of Health? Senator Sanbuenaventura, yes.
So thank you, Amy. If we pass this and this passes WAM and then on the other side, is the Department of Health's position that you folks are gonna do it in-house? Or you folks are gonna RFP it out to various counties? Because Honolulu already has the Core program, which is similarly structured that they started in December. So doesn't make sense to create another program. Makes more sense to leave that program up.
Yeah, I can speak to that. We've had crisis mobile outreach teams for a long time in our state, in each county. But those crisis mobile outreach teams all were, have behavioral health staff only. So the only difference here is adding for some of the teams the ability, so it's the same contract, it's just adding or mod, you know, to the contractor. It might have to be a new RFP, we'll have to look at that. But to add those same teams or some of those teams having the ability to have those personnel. We're working really closely with Core and making sure that we would have the numbers of those that have that makeup that you would need on Oahu. So it's been a really good partnership in being able to discuss back and forth how many teams would need it, where are they available? Because there is a limited number of teams available for Core, and then each of the counties has a limited number of CMO outreach teams as well. So I think this is a great thing that we're working together, making sure that everyone in the community would be covered.
Okay, so it's not duplicative, it's basically to supplement, right?
Yeah, make sure everyone's covered with this service, yep, yep.
Thank you.
Senator Moriwaki.
For island coverage and coordinated with Core.
You're partially on mute, can you, can you ask me? You're good now, go ahead.
Yeah, my question was the same as Senator Sanbuenaventura. Just, just to make sure that the neighbor islands were covered and that you were coordinating with Core and not duplicating. So thank you, thank you.
Yes, we already had our first meeting with Core to discuss that. So I think that's great and many partners were there to be able to work together about what we would need.
Thank you.
Okay, great. We'll move to the next measure on the agenda, SB 2882 relating to community health workers. This establishes the Community Health Worker Certification Program within the Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs. First up, offering comments, the DCCA.
Hi, good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Alani Kioki, Licensing Administrator for the Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs Professional and Patiental Licensing Division. The Department will stand on its written comments, but I would like to point out a few things, if you'd allow me the time. First of all, the Department respectfully requests that prior to enactment of any regulatory scheme for community health workers, the Committee refer this matter to the state auditor for a sunrise analysis pursuant to Hawaii revised statute, section 26H6. This sunrise analysis is authorized via Senate Concurrent Resolution, which there is already a draft Senate Concurrent Resolution number two. If the Committee is not inclined to move in that direction, the Department does respectfully, respectfully request several amendments be made to this particular bill as outlined in the testimony. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Department of Health offering comments. Okay, Hawaii Home Birth Collective.
Aloha, my name's Kristi Dork, I'm the president of the Hawaii Home Birth Collective. Because dulas were defined in MP 2882 as a traditional health worker. And due to the current language which defines a community health worker, we submitted testimony just asking questions on how this bill could potentially affect midwife and traditional birth practitioners within the community. So I'm here for any questions and thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I see Lola, so we can go back to the Department of Health. That was you trying to get on for this.
Yes, that was me, thank you so much. Thank you, Chair Keo Ho Kalole and Vice Chair Baker and Members of the Committee. I'm Lola Irvin, representing Director Char. And the Department offers comments and- And the department offers comments, and we do defer to the DCCA under financial requirements for setting up the certification program. And thank you so much for hearing the bill that acknowledges the important work CHWs are doing, have been doing, and are heroically doing during the pandemic. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next, we have the Hawaii Public Health Institute offering comments.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Jessica Yamouche, on behalf of the Hawaii Public Health Institute, providing comments on SB two eight eight two. We stand on our written testimony and just wanted to add that we appreciate the work that Senator Kanuha and his office have put in over the last several months working on this and support the intent of the bill. We just want to ensure that there won't be unintended consequences that would prevent some CHWs from continuing to do the great work that they do. We have our specific concerns outlined in our testimony. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's all the registered testimony we have on this measure. Is there anyone else who would like to submit live testimony? Okay, we have, for the record, the Department of Budget and Finance offering comments, HMSE with comments, Hawaii Primary Care Association in support, Hawaii Substance Abuse Coalition with comments, Kula Nonapoe Hawaii Opapolea Kiwalo and Kalawahine in opposition, Amber Granite, Kristy McPherson, and Crystal Bargallo, all in support, and the University of Hawaii with late testimony offering comments. Members, any questions? Senator San Buena Ventura.
Aye, for the Attorney General's Office. Is AG there?
I don't believe we have them signed up to testify on this, is...
Okay, never mind then. It's regarding a sunrise analysis, but we'll talk offline.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next measure, SB twenty-five twenty-nine, relating to Behavioral Health Services. This appropriates funds for fiscal year twenty-two and twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three, to accommodate the anticipated increase in volume of calls to Hawaii Cares Crisis Helpline following the transition of the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline's Dial Code to nine eight eight on July sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. First up, we have the Department of Health in support.
Good afternoon, Amy Curtis for the Department of Health. We stand on our written testimony in support with comments. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you very much. The Hawaii Psychiatric Medical Association with comments.
Miss?
Okay, we have you now.
Yes, aye. My name is Dennis Mealy, psychiatrist, vice chair of the Legislative Committee Hawaii Psychiatric Medical Association. And we have not provided testimony in support of a variety of measures for expanding crisis services, but we're strongly in support of that. We see a great need, particularly in relation to the expansion of mental health problems with the pandemic, but there's always been a great need. So we're strongly supportive of this bill and those that are alike it. We would, though, refer to Senate Bill twenty nineteen, which we think has some additional provisions that maybe could be incorporated in this initiative, and we've listed those items that maybe could be included in this bill. Also would like to point out, though, that a mechanism for future funding, there is provisions for one-time funding, but we have liked the idea in the nine eight eight to measures that provide for ongoing funding. So that's referenced in that bill, and we certainly support that, as well as we support the creation of a task force, but would like to have, if such is, is developed the addition of a board-certified psychiatrist that we can, because psychiatrists are very involved in these crisis services, that representation on the task force might be good as well. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to testify on the call? Okay, we have Department of Budget and Finance offering comments, the Hawaii Disability Rights Center in support, Dara Carlin in support, and Prevent Suicide Hawaii Task Force in support. Members, are there any questions? Senator Moriwaki.
Aloha, aloha, Dr. Curtis, Amy, I have you back on. Could you tell me about the crisis outreach Hawaii Cares? It currently is, is providing this kind of crisis outreach and is doing a good job, but my understanding is that it's going to be terminated and a new RFP is going to go out, is out. And my concern is that transition, because we know how difficult it is in terms of timing of getting projects started up and running. So what kinds of efforts are being made to transition? Because I don't want to see service go down.
No, we agree. You're correct, we're in our active usual procurement process right now. It is a contracted service, and we have considered in the timeline for the procurement time for transition. And we've also working right now with our federal partners to have additional training for those crisis workers as well for the state, so we feel very well positioned for this transition.
You have a current project that already has people who are trained, I think some forty people who were answering these calls, and it's a good program. What is happening to that group and that cadre of already trained people? And how can you make sure that, that those kinds of services, at least we've been calling number, and it's been terrific service? So what's happening to that cadre of people?
I'm afraid I don't think I can comment on an active procurement process, but this is the usual process that we always go through for our contracted services, and we understand the importance of this. This service until two thousand nineteen was done in-house by our staff at the, in the Adult Mental Health Division, and we have a very strong support of very knowledgeable people that are there to oversee those contracts.
This is, this is different from the universities of Hawaii, Hawaii Cares, that was providing that hotline services. I know that when we're talking about the homeless programs, that, you know, there was one place to call, or so one stop shop, so to speak, and being, you know, like an information and referral and counseling service.
Yes, no, no problem. It is the Department of Health, Hawaii Cares, it always has been. It will stay the same, there's one phone number, but in the last year, what we found was that we were getting concerns, the individuals that were in crisis were having to wait a bit longer for those that were going through routine needs for treatment. And so what we've done, when we did this, as we're always working through continual process improvement, when we put out the RFPs and the request for proposals, we ensured that there is a part and a group of individuals that will be focused solely on taking those crisis calls, because also, as you can imagine, the skills that you need and the expertise that you have, when you are handling folks that are calling in that may have suicidal ideation, could be different than what you want for individuals that are doing long assessments or really detailed assessments to determine what kind of treatment may be needed on a routine basis. So they will be seamlessly forwarded to any of those informations they need when it is the routine treatment, but we want to ensure that those crisis calls, especially with the new three-digit nine eight eight number rather than that longer ten-digit number, as well as the numbers we have, are always able to get that crisis counseling that they need.
So to be clear, the same number is operational through the transition?
Oh, yes.
There won't be anything stopped in terms of services?
No, that is a Department of Health phone number and will always be kept, so that will never change. Or I hope. That's overstatement. We don't plan on that changing.
And just going back to SB two-five-two-nine, on page five, when you talk about expanding and enhancing crisis mobile outreach services in each county, is that the same as SB two-seven-three-six, or is this another program you're talking about in this bill?
Yeah, it's just the amount. It's the same type of service, it's the amount that we can add in. But I think there is some work that we could do, or perhaps could be done, to help put some of the different crisis services perhaps together, including...
One place, yeah.
Yeah, the stabilization, yep.
It's like it's a duplication, and there's a way that you can work that through. It really is clear what the service is and what we're paying for and what we can expect as outcomes.
Okay, that's good, thank you.
Thank you Chair.
Okay, members, any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to the next measure on the agenda, SB twenty-two oh five relating to suicide prevention. This creates a task force to develop and implement a plan to utilize the nine eight eight calling code of the National Suicide and Mental Health Lifeline. Also makes an appropriation. Department of Health in opposition.
Good afternoon Committee, Amy Curtis again for the Department of Health. We are speaking in opposition simply because this is a task force to implement a nine eight eight line that we have already implemented in our state. We are one of the leaders in the nation for already having our National Suicide Prevention Lifeline go into a statewide twenty-four-seven crisis line that includes crisis mobile outreach teams that are available throughout the state to anyone that needs them, again, twenty-four-seven. Simply because of our limited resources, we want to focus our crisis efforts on those things that we still need to fill in, rather than on this task that we have, and I think very, very well positioned for our state to have already had this completed. Thank you, and let me know if there's any questions.
Thank you very much. Next, we have the Hawaii Psychiatric Medical Association with comments.
So Chair, we're generally in support of this. The idea of a task force that would ongoing, ongoing oversee and monitor this effort seems to be of worth, as long as it does have psychiatrist representation. In general, though, our testimony is consistent with the previous bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's all the registered testimony we have. Is there anyone else on who would like to testify? Okay, I'd like to note for the record, the Department of Budget and Finance with comments, Hawaii Disability Rights Center in support, Hawaii Primary Care Association in support, Hawaii Substance Abuse Coalition in support, Dara Carlin in support, and late testimony from the Department of Human Services in support, and the Prevent Suicide Hawaii Task Force with comments. Members, any questions? Okay, we'll move to the next measure, SB thirty-two-ten relating to family guidance centers. This requires the Department of Health's Child and Adolescent Mental Health Division to establish a family guidance center office in Ka'ou, in the county of Hawaii, to serve the needs of the children and youth in the southern region of the county, in addition to the offices in Waimea, Kona, and Hilo. Also makes an appropriation. First up, we have the Stonewall Caucus of the Democratic Party of Hawaii in support.
Not present Chair.
Okay, Department of Health with comments.
Good afternoon Chair, Vice Chair, and committee members. I'm Dr. Danielle Hernandez Armstrong from the Department of Health. Thanks for the opportunity to testify. The Child and Adolescent Mental Health Division stands on our testimony for SB thirty-two-ten. I would just like to add that we were able to get some numbers on the number of youth we serviced in that area. In the last year, we serviced only thirteen youth in the area, because it's a low-population area. And our current guidance centers do service that area, so it would be difficult to justify a new family guidance center when we already are providing services. I'm available for questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. That's all the registered testimony. Is there anyone who'd like to testify? Okay, Department of Budget and Finance submitted written testimony with comments. The Hawaii County Council member, Miley David, submitted testimony in support. Zahava Zaidoff in support, Sean Lohe in support, and Joanne Adams in support. Members, any questions? Okay, then we'll move to the last measure on this agenda, SB twenty-six sixty-six relating to the Waianae Coast Comprehensive Health Center Emergency Department. This measure appropriates funds to the Waianae Coast Comprehensive Health Center for operation of its twenty-four-hour emergency department. First, we have the Attorney General's Office with comments.
Good afternoon Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Angela Tokuda for the Attorney General. We submitted written comments, and I'll be available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, great. Department of Health with comments.
Good afternoon, my name is Matthew Shin, I'm Chief of the Family Health Services Division for the Department of Health. Department stands on its written comments, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Waianae Coast Comprehensive Health Center in support.
Not present Chair.
Okay, we also have written testimony from the Department of Budget and Finance with comments, the Hawaii Primary Care Association in support, and the Health Committee of the Democratic Party of Hawaii in support. Members, any questions? Okay, if not, we're going to recess for decision-making. Recession. Okay, we're back for decision-making on this Monday, February seventh, twenty twenty-two, one P M. Health agenda, the first measure on the agenda is SB twenty-three-four relating to health. Recommended amendments. So, you know, this bill is pretty complicated. It went all the way to the end last year, and I think there were some, there were, there were still definitely some kinks that needed to be worked out. I really would like to keep this measure moving, even though it's a work in progress. So I'm going to recommend that we strike the changes to page two, lines twelve and thirteen, and in section two, adopt the Hawaii Pacific Health Suggested Amendments, adding emergency room physicians and psychologists to the list of specialists who could make an assessment. Some technical non-substantive amendments, and I'm going to defect the effective date to January one, twenty fifty. Members, any comments? Okay, seeing none, Vice Chair SB twenty-three-four passing with amendments. Chair will tie.
Vice Chair votes aye, Senator Moriwaki.
Aye.
Senator San Buena Ventura.
Aye.
Senator Favela.
Aye.
Chair, your recommendation's been adopted.
Thank you very much. The next measure is SB twenty-four sixty-seven relating to mental health screenings. I recommend that we defect the effective date on this measure to January one, twenty fifty, and keep it moving. Any comments? Okay, members, SB twenty-four sixty-seven passing with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Vice Chair votes aye. Of the other three members on the call, any objections or reservations? If not, measures adopted, five ayes.
Thank you very much. Next measure, SB twenty-six eighty, relating to health, authorizes APRNs to practice medical aid in dying. I'm going to recommend that we accept the Department of Health amendments strengthening the nondisclosure protections, add marriage and family therapists as eligible counselors. And we also have, we're going to add a requirement clarifying that the nurses in the bill are licensed, all the different designations. There are also some technical amendments, and we're going to defect the effective date on this measure to January one, twenty fifty. Any comments? Okay, Vice Chair SB twenty-six eighty passing with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Vice Chair votes aye. Of the other three members on the call, any objections or reservations?
No vote for me, please.
A no vote for you, Senator Favela.
Yes.
Thank you. So I have four ayes and one no. Measures, your recommendations are adopted, Chair.
Thank you very much. The next measure is SB twenty-seven eighteen relating to medical cannabis. I'm going to defer decision-making on this measure until Monday, February fourteenth, at one ten P M via video conference. Okay, next measure, SB twenty-seven thirty-five related to behavioral health crisis stabilization beds. I'm going to recommend we blank, blank out the appropriation amounts and defect the effective date to January one, twenty fifty. Any comments or questions?
Recommendation of the Chair is to pass with amendments. Chair, votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. The other three members on the call, any reservations or no votes? Hearing none, Chair, your recommendation's adopted.
Thank you very much. The next measure, SB twenty-seven thirty-six related to crisis outreach. Same recommendation, to blank out the appropriation amounts in the bill and defect the effective date to January one, twenty fifty. Any comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, Vice Chair passing with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Vice Chair votes aye. Of the other three members on the call, any objections or reservations? Hearing none, Chair, your recommendation's adopted, five ayes.
Thank you very much. Next measure is SB twenty-eight eighty-two relating to community health workers. The recommendation is to... The recommendation is to accept the DCCA amendments. There are also some technical non-substantive amendments. Any comments or questions? Seeing none. Vice Chair, passing with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Vice Chair votes aye. Of the other three members on the call, any objections or reservations? Hearing none. Five ayes. Chair, your recommendation's adopted.
Thank you very much. Next measure is SB 2529 relating to behavioral services. The other recommendation is to make some clarifications to the preamble, blank the appropriation amounts, defect the effective date to January 1, 2050, and there are also some technical non-substantive amendments. Any comments or questions, members? Okay, seeing none. Vice Chair, SB 2529 passing with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Vice Chair votes aye. Of the other three members on the call, any objections or reservations? Hearing none. Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Five ayes.
Thank you very much. The next measure is SB 2205 relating to suicide prevention. Recommendation here is to add a member to the Hawaii Primary Care Association Task Force. Uh, uh, I'm sorry, a member of the Hawaii Primary Care Association to the task force. Defect the effective date to January 1, 2050. There are also some technical non-substantive amendments. I recognize that, that the Department of Health was opposed to this bill. There are a number of, there are a number of legislative vehicles relating to 988. And so, I'd like to move this measure and keep the conversation going. I do intend to hear other member, other measures before the health agenda is complete in the Senate. Any comments or questions? Okay, seeing none. Vice Chair, SB 2205 passing with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Vice Chair votes aye. Of the other three members on the call, any objections or reservations? Hearing none. Five ayes. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much. Next measure, SB 3210 relating to family guided centers. Recommendation is to blank out the appropriation amounts, defect the effective date to January 1, 2050, and there are technical amendments as well. Any comments or questions? Seeing none. Vice Chair, SB 3210 passing with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Vice Chair votes aye. Of the other three members on the call, any objections or reservations? Hearing none. Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Five ayes.
Thank you very much. Next measure is SB 2666 relating to Waimea Comprehensive Health Center Emergency Department. The recommendation is to accept the Attorney General's Office recommended amendments, blank out the appropriation amounts, effect the effective date to January 1, 2050, and there are technical amendments as well. Any comments or questions? Okay, Vice Chair, SB 2666 passing with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Vice Chair votes aye. Of the other three members on the call, any with reservations or no votes? Hearing none. Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Five ayes.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to our 1:10 p.m. decision-making agenda. This is on SB 2592 relating to health. This is the Clinical Laboratory Director Bill. I'm not quite ready on it yet, so I'm going to defer decision-making on this measure to Friday, February 11, at 1:10 p.m. And on that note, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.